Good evening. This is the board meeting of Wabash City Schools. It is Monday, November 4th, 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Everyone is present.
Having a quorum. I'll ask you to stand for the Pledge of Legions. Oh, call this meeting to order.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in the global community. Welcome. Revisions. Approve revision to item 5.b.3 and approve revision to move item 5.g. before item 5.f. All those in favor of approving the revisions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the revisions pass. Item G, consent agenda. We have minutes of October 21st and October 30th. Some claims, there's no donations tonight, and there's no financials tonight. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, November 18th, 2024, here at Wabash City Hall at 6:00 PM. There are some items of communication. And... Is there anybody that wants to speak about any of the agenda items tonight? Okay. I'll open the public meeting of Wabash City Schools. First, November 4th, 6:00 PM, here at City Hall.
What's the public mean we're opening?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, for the... The school board will discuss the terms of the tentative agreement of the teacher collective bargaining agreement, which is posted at www.apaches.k12-ion.us. Thank you, Rod. I'll accept a motion to open.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
First, I want to start by thanking Mr. Burns and Mr. Carmichael for their work on behalf of our teachers. I'm just going to go through a summary of the compensation that teachers will receive through this contract. First, teachers have to be rated effective or highly effective to be eligible for any new compensation. Teachers will receive $200 for an effective or highly effective rating and $100 for being employed with us for at least 120 days, which is considered a year of service. That $300 will be added to their base. Teachers that were rated effective and highly effective, who worked for us 100, for the 120 days, will also receive a one-time $600 stipend to be paid out prior to the end of this calendar year. And finally, teachers rated effective or highly effective, who worked for 120 days with us last year, will receive a one-time $300 deposit into their 401A account, their VALOC account, and this will be deposited prior to the end of the 24-25 school year. We also made a few changes to the ECA schedule. Mentor teachers were removed and leadership teams and lead learner teams for each building was added. The duties of the mentor teachers will now fall on the lead learner team members. We had several positions in the ECA schedule that hadn't been filled for several years, so those were removed. So when you look at the removals that we had and then the new positions that we've added, it was an overall increase in our ECA pay of $149. So really, these were the only things that were changed in our collective bargaining agreement. All other parts of it remain the same.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The meeting is closed. Old business, there's none, new business. The board will discuss the Heartland Career Center roofing bids and will approve one of the two bids.
Do you want to do that?
Do I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do you want to talk about this?
Okay, discussion.
You have it written down in the nice format.
So we have two different options that have been presented to us. We discussed them at our work session last week. So tonight, we need to decide which bid we want to move forward with. One of them was Fort Wayne Roofing. That was a metal option. Or AAA Roofing Company, and that was a two-ply option. So we need to decide one of those two. And then we also need to determine whether or not we want to apply the remainder of the Roofing Fund to the project and whether or not we want to apply the NIPSCO easement revenue towards the project. So my recommendation is that we go with AAA Roofing's two-ply option with the funds from the Roofing Fund being applied to the project, but not the funds from the NIPSCO easement. When we approved that NIPSCO easement, we did that with the understanding that the money that we would receive from that would go to the scholarship fund because the track of land that we sold, that's what that money, when we rented it out, went into the scholarship fund.
Any board questions?
My understanding that we had a couple of bids. One was for a metal roof, and there was only one bid for a metal roof because there were some concerns on how that might...
In the future.
In the future.
Yes.
Could affect HVAC or other things, so...
I think we had...
There was only one company that actually...
We had five or six companies to get in all that bid, but only one of them was willing to do the metal roof.
Right, because there were some concerns about...
Yes.
Some structural issues with the metal roof. So the recommendation is to go with a two-ply that has a 30-year warranty. Is that correct?
They were pushing for a 30-year warranty. It was 20, they said 20 to 30-year warranty.
So what are they, how much are...
The metal roof, they're saying it would be a 50-year warranty.
Who's "they"? The contractor?
Yes.
Okay, so the contractor for the two-ply said 20...
To 30.
To 30 is what we could expect out of it.
Correct.
Okay. And the contractor for the metal said 50?
It'd be a 50-year warranty.
What's the difference in expense for the two-ply that Dr. Sivili recommends and the metal roof?
Well, we need to determine if we want to spend the money on the Roofing Fund. That determines the amount. So if we want to use the funds that were put in the roofing...
It's about $59,000 more.
Yeah, so if we go with the funds, we use the funds, it would only be, we would owe $122,335 compared to $141,900.
And what would we owe using the funds on the two-ply?
That's the two-ply, sorry.
That's the two-ply.
With the metal, it's $181,921 with the funds and $201,563 without.
Okay. So let's do two different motions. We'll do one for the roof and then one for whether or not to use the Roofing Fund. So does anyone have, does anyone want to make a recommendation other than the AAA Roofing Company's two-ply option?
I would make a motion to use the, or to go with the two-ply.
Right.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Now let's, I'll take a motion on whether or not we use the remainder of the Roofing Fund towards this project.
I move that we use the funds that have been put in, put aside for the Roofing Fund to be applied to the cost of the roof.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah, they also wanted us to vote on the NIPSCO easement amount.
Okay.
And I will say, can I add something? What is, what Amy said is true. It's supposed to go to the scholarship fund. There are some other school board, other school boards that have suggested that it be distributed evenly through classroom teachers and also put in a maintenance fund.
But it's originally been earmarked for scholarship. That's what it's been...
That's what the property has always been used for.
That's always been used for, okay.
So what happens if we vote to have it allocate earmarked for scholarship funds and others have it for maintenance and another one for teacher pay and there's no majority?
I think we would have to determine it in our board meeting, what we want to bring back to the table.
Will someone make a motion on that?
I'd make a motion to use it for the scholarship fund.
I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item B, board will approve the following classified staff. One, Pamela Rodriguez as a cafeteria para at LH Carpenter at a rate of $10 per hour pending background check. Two, Teresa Shreves as a three-year-old paraprofessional at a rate of $12 per hour, beginning November 5th, 2024. Three, Rebecca Nicum for a part-time position at LHC effective November 5th, 2024, pending background check. And four, Charity France as a pre-K teacher at LH Carpenter beginning December 2nd, 2024, at a rate of $85 a day through December 20th to shadow the resigning teacher. She will go on salary beginning January 6th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
First, we want to welcome these ladies to Wabash City Schools. The cafeteria para was one that we did not replace, and Mrs. Wilson has asked that we go ahead and replace that. She had found someone that was interested. That was one reason why we didn't replace it. But this will allow her to pull some of the, she was using Mrs. Bear in there a lot and Mrs. Enyurt, and so they'll be able to be pulled out of there and work with students. I also want to explain the reasoning for having Mrs. France in the classroom during the month of December. She will be taking over this class after Christmas break, and we believe it would be beneficial for her to be in there with the students while the current teacher is still there, just to give her a little bit of a time to get to know the students and the parents. And that way, when these three-year-olds come back to a new teacher, it's somebody that they've met before and it's not just a surprise to them.
How many actual school days would that be?
It would be 15 days.
15 days?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking about. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item C, board to approve FMLA for employee number 3089, effective April 7th, 2025, through the end of the school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I recommend that the board approve this FMLA request.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. D, board to approve the following for athletics. One, Heather McKee and Brooklyn Gannon as elementary girls' basketball coaches. Two, board to approve Marcus Clancy as a high school boys' basketball volunteer. And three, board to approve Ben Dillon as a volunteer coach for girls' wrestling.
Second, I'm just moving.
Second.
Discussion?
Heather's done our elementary girls' basketball for a while now. In Brooklyn, used to coach with me at the high school, and now we're getting her back to come with the elementary, so that'll be great. Marcus is the PE teacher at OJ, so he hasn't coached for us before, so he'll be stepping in to help with the boys' basketball. And then Ben has helped us before with baseball and football, so he's going to help out with girls' wrestling.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item E, board to approve resignations from the following classified staff members. One, Amanda Ella, effective December 20th, 2024. Two, Katie Coburn, effective October 25th, 2024. Three, Donna Dietrich, effective November 8th, 2024. Accept a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
We'd like to thank Ms. Ella, Ms. Coburn, and Mrs. Dietrich for their time and service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Board will adopt the following resolutions.
Hang on. Okay, so one thing, we have our student council here, but we didn't have them as an agenda item, so do we have them go at the end during community? Okay. Okay. And remember, we have to do G before we can do F. That was one of the revisions.
Okay. Item G, board will hold the following hearings. Number one, a bus replacement plan and two a capital projects plan. I'll accept a motion to open the hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we do these together in one or, okay. The bus replacement, you have that. Over the next five years, we will need to replace six buses. Five of them are regular buses and one will be an activity bus. The next year that we need to replace a bus is 2026. However, due to the lead time, we are probably going to have to order that in the next few months to make sure that we have it by the start of school for August 2026. For capital projects, we do have a few items on there that are more just general upkeep, replacing carpet, cement and concrete work, and asphalt work throughout the district. A few of the items on there will be taken care of through our upcoming project. This includes the HVAC update and hopefully the window replacements and roof replacement at the high school and potentially roof replacement at other schools, depending on how much money we have left. We have the new restrooms at Alumni Field on there, however, we know that those will most likely get pushed back.
When do we pay for the bus? Do we pay when we order? Do we pay half when we order? Do we pay when it comes in?
Yeah, we don't pay until it comes in, and then we make lease payments, so we don't pay at all.
Okay.
These are the leases?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Capital projects, those are, those are estimated things that we want to do and really depend on funding.
Funds that are available, yes.
Doesn't mean we're voting that it's going to be done tonight.
Correct.
I mean, we're not approving those to be done.
It's more of, yes, just a projection of these are the things that we think we need to have done and how much we think it's going to cost.
Okay. All those in favor, are we voting on it?
Close the hearing.
So we're not voting on it?
Then you pass the resolutions.
Okay. I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The hearing is closed. Now we vote to pass the resolution?
Yes.
Board will adopt the following resolutions. Resolutions to adopt the bus replacement plan and resolutions to adopt the capital projects plan.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
Well, I want to start by thanking our high school student council members for being here. You never get to, well, you get, you always stay, so you hear us say that. I know I always enjoy hearing what our students are doing at the high school. Next, I want to congratulate our boys' cross-country team on another amazing finish at the state meet. I'll let Matt share more about that, about their performance. My husband and I enjoyed going down. We had great weather to be able to watch the boys run Saturday. Our winter sports are gearing up with our first home basketball game this Friday night. Next Wednesday, November 13th, is our next staff PD day. Reminder to families that there's no school or e-learning for students on that day, and we will remind families later this week via Parent Square. And finally, we shared a survey with our families and staff last week. This is the first step in the development of a new strategic plan. We also will be getting it out to local businesses. Grow Wabash is doing that for us. We ask that families complete the survey by Friday, November 15th, and we will send out another reminder through Parent Square later this week.
Okay, thank you. Items from chief operations officer?
Before I get to cross-country, I will again thank Mr. Nicum. He's got our boilers up and running and approved and passed inspection, so knock on wood, we need them to work for about five months and be good. So he's done a good job getting those things to where they had to be to pass inspection and then get them fired up and working. So thanks to him. Boys Cross Country finished 21st in the state meet on Saturday. Last year, we were 24th, so we, a little bit of improvement there. Again, we're the smallest school at the state meet. Dr. Sivili said, even announced it at the thing, that this was the 10th time we've been in the state meet. It's like 46, 47, 48, 57, 77, and 78, 99, and 2000, and then the last two years. Isaiah Cordis ran great, ran under 16 minutes and finished 55th. Just another great season by our boys' cross-country and a great job by Coach Evans and all those boys. So hats off to them. Great job. I think the only other school with under 1,000 people there was Concordia, who of course is private.
Yeah.
And they have 700 and something. So yeah, what a testament to our kids. So great job by them.
Okay, thank you. Items from administrators? Other items from visitors, we'll start with?
All right, so most of you know, I'm Trevor Hare. I'm the Vice President. Unfortunately, my presenters tonight had other academic things they have to do today, so it will just be me tonight. So what are we doing on the student council? So this past month, we were pretty busy. We had Powderpuff on the 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Stone, for refereeing and keeping our kids safe. We had no injuries. It was very good. That was my big fear, was someone was going to get hurt, and no one got hurt, so. So we were actually able to raise $982, which is very, very good. It was, I didn't really have an idea what we were going to have walking into it, and a very good crowd come through, so I was very happy with that number. All that money was actually donated directly to the Fish Food Drive, which we had last week. So with the Fish Food Drive, that happened from October 28th through November 1st. We had a couple competitions going on. We had an individual competition where each student could donate an item, get some points. Then the top three students got to get a prize. I placed first, Cameron Wilcox placed second, and then Maya Howard placed third. We had an advisory competition so that each advisory from each grade, the top advisory from each grade, who accumulated the most points, will get a pizza party. It went Chitlin, Ballard, and we had Mr. Burns's advisory. And we have one more. I'm trying to think off the top of my head. It'll come to me later. A whole one, so they will all be getting a pizza party. And then we had a special competition this year. I have won the last four years of Fish Food Drive individually, and I wanted to give something towards the whole school that will kind of get them to donate and try to beat me. So I said, if the whole school accumulates enough points and wins against me, the top donator will get to pine me in the face. So as a result, the whole school ended up beating me. They accumulated about 11,000 points. I had about 7,000. So we are working right now to get a little event together for everyone to come together and watch me get pined in the face. Cameron Wilcox will be the one who gets to do that. She's our Vice President, so she's going to be having a lot of fun doing that. In total, we raised 500, 380 items, and we raised a total of $1,971. That is including the 982 for Powderpuff. We are looking forward to the future. Right now, we're thinking of some new projects. I have some new things that I am kind of bringing forth and putting together. I'm hoping to have the privilege of being able to bridge you guys into it once we get it kind of finalized and we have plans to move forward with it. But kind of a big thing that I wanted to work on this year was Sports Spectacular. I'm kind of bringing the spectacular back on the Sports Spectacular. This last couple of years, we've had a doing-to-doing attendance rate for Sports Spectacular, which from what I'm told, it used to be a very big event. So I'm working this year to make it a little bit more interactive, trying to get more people involved. So that's my overall goal for that. We already kind of talked about sports. I'm very pleased to say that the cross-country boys got 21st in the year states. So very good job to them. I definitely couldn't be running that much. Girls' basketball's first game is Wednesday, November 11th, at Taylor. Boys' basketball, we have first game Wednesday, November 27th, at Oak Hill, at home, against Oak Hill at home. We have swim, first swim meet will be Monday, December 2nd, versus Tip Valley at home. And then we have boys' wrestling, first meet Friday, December 6th, at home against Quanahaw. And then girls' wrestling, first meet Saturday, December 7th, at home against East Mill. It's been a very busy month with our clubs and organizations. The Angling Club, done by Mr. Denny, has had several outings this last month or so. They went fishing for catfish at the Wabash River. They went fishing for crappie at Salmon. A lot of fun times. Some special recognitions for a couple of their members was Aelyn Pulling. He caught a three-point pound bass on the Wabash River. Pretty cool. The Athletics and Council, also sponsored by Mr. Denny. They're, they deliver blessing backpacks at OJ each Friday during advisory, some of the things they've been doing. They plan to start sportsman, sportsmanship lessons with the fifth graders during their second, during the second quarter. And they would like to recognize some of their new members, Mia Fairchild, Luke Blossom, and Chloe Cooper, joining them. And then we have SAD, sponsored by Miss Clement. They had the blood drive this past Thursday, I believe it was, October 31st. They had $40 and they were able to get 20 pints of blood. And then we have the academic teams, sponsored by Mr. Winrich. The middle school team has won their third straight RPC Spellable title. So starting November 4th today, spellable teams are in action and are at the state regional competitions. That's actually where my two presenters are today, and the one from last week. And I was like, hey, you go, you go knock dead there. The high school team has over 2,000 words that they need to know. The middle school team has over 1,400 words that they need to know, and I would like to wish them luck for that. Participation in the academic teams, as high scores go towards achieving their academic letter. And then some student recognition, Maya Gallier is an eighth bidder for achieving the near-perfect score of an eight at the RPC meet. Violet George, Chloe Cooper, Mia Fairchild, Martha Stella, Scarlett Brookshire, Abigail Smith, Kyron Mahan, and Ethan Slush for their presence and attending the practices for spellable this past month. And then some things to note, several applications for college close this past November 1st. Seniors are to meet with the Community Foundation and Questa tomorrow, November 5th. This is a part of a new thing this year, where we're breaking it up into smaller sessions to retain the information a little better, not have it all crammed down our file at the same time. And we want to ask more questions there at the end. The Colleging Career Fair is this Wednesday, November 6th. We have a PD day, November 13th. Thanksgiving break is November 27th through the 29th. We had our SAT scores released to us. And then something that is kind of going around right now that we kind of want to maybe give out to some of our high school junior girls. The American Legion Archery is looking for female juniors. This is to attend a girl's state, state week. This is happening from June 22nd through June 28th at Trine University. Typically, we sponsor about, typically, they sponsor about two girls to attend. If you want to learn more about this or you need some more information, you can contact Terry Denny. She's the one who kind of has all of that. And we have approximately about 110 days left to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Other items from visitors? Items from board members. Let's start with Jay.
I'm just super happy that our school is, works together to bring funds and canned goods to Fish. I think it's a huge thing for our community that Fish does, number one, and that for us to support them. I really, really appreciate that. I know I work personally with people who use it, and it does not go unnoticed. So I appreciate you guys, the effort that you guys put into that, so thank you. Also, I was trying to find it real quick. Austin from the Rise Program, I'm not sure if you guys saw that, but he got like second place at the Special Olympics bowling competition. He goes to state, so I think that's pretty cool, and I wanted to highlight that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing else to add.
Brad?
Nothing from me. Thanks.
Okay. I wanted to give a shout out to Mia Fairchild and, her name escapes me, the girl that was with her.
Chloe Cooper.
Chloe Cooper. On Halloween, they came around to houses with a suitcase, collecting food for Fish. And so I gave them, you know, I was like, oh, yeah, because my kids never take anything. So I thought, and I said, well, do you want candy? No, it's okay. So a shout out to them. I thought that was amazing. Did anyone else do it?
They didn't, no one else did that. That was actually a thing our student council made. I was like, hey, guys, you know, this is something they used to do. I was unfortunately busy locking myself in my room, doing my college application that night. So I was like, hey, you guys, you need something to do on Halloween, you got nothing else to do, I hurried you around. And when they, I came in Friday morning and they had a bunch of stuff, I was like, very good job. They had, I think, over 102, maybe 100 or 200 items that they brought in, and I think they got like over $100 that they got, although just for doing, doing that, so.
Years ago, I can't confirm or deny, but there may have been a group that went to surrounding communities, knocking on doors and saying they were from... surrounding communities, knocking on doors and saying they were from the local high school, collecting funds for Fish, and were able to get quite a bit more. We used to have a lot of fun with that back in the day.